Prior to the meeting to be added to the packet. So, so council could have an opportunity to review what we can kind of know. Cause a lot of times what happens is we're receiving information for the first time in the meeting. And so, we can't, we can't vote things up or down until we, you know, know what it is. So that's why we had the extended conversation. And so, I think if, if, you know, say, even if it's just, if it's not a ton of information to provide, you say, hey, this is what this agenda is about, this is what it's regarding to, you know, send it, send it or maybe add it to the packet. I think that will alleviate time for conversation because we all have a general idea of what's going on.
Uh, when I went to one of T M L conferences, uh, that was, that was stated, the idea of putting the motion out first. And so, half the city said it was a good idea, half the city said it wasn't a good idea. Uh, but the thing that, when I talked to a different, uh, council member, the one that said that it was a good idea, was kind of what Randall stated in terms of they got all the information that they need pretty quickly. But they're also like, they're like three, four, they, they had either the same number of council members or less than us. So, I think, I think that issue is kind of a, an arm to it. There, there's an actual origin that, that needs to be addressed, which is, which is basically getting information that we request, you know, not only, you know, just having it, but getting it. And, uh, you know, beforehand, I remember when, and when I introduced the policy for, uh, moving the agenda to the Wednesday instead of the Friday, uh, uh, last council meeting. Uh, that also came because Ms. Dickey was saying that she could put it out on Wednesday, but she had it done. It was just that we were, they were given to her at the last second. So she had the way to put on the door because of the request. So, that was to give us the opportunity to get all the information early.
Right, so, so, and, uh, and speaking of that, I think, I think that kind of falls on Ms. Dickey. Because there, at, at some point, you have to cut off, there, there, there is a time just allocated. I think it's, it's Thursday where Thursday, so she shouldn't have, she shouldn't be waiting until the end of the day to put the agenda together. If she doesn't have that, if she doesn't have, that, and that's my opinion. If she didn't have the information prior to a certain time when she started the agenda. And what used to happen was, we would get an email like on a Wednesday and say, hey, if you, if, if you have an item that you want placed on the agenda, I need to know by tomorrow. And if, and if we didn't get that item and to her, or we didn't send information, it didn't make the agenda. Then it fell back, the responsibility fell back on her instead of trying to wait till the last minute to put the entire agenda together. So, I think that when you do it like that, when you say, hey, I'm starting the agenda at three o'clock on whatever day, and if the information isn't provided, or the item hasn't been provided, it's not gonna make it. So you can't send an item after this time. You know, Ms. Dickey, I, I'm sure Ms. Dickey was just trying to accommodate. But at the same time, she has to understand like what she has to do to be efficient.
So, so what's council's pleasure? You, you, Council Wallace, you had an idea, you, you had mentioned Wednesday previously. Is that something council wants to do, then we can move on?
So, when we, so when it was, I mean, we approved it, uh, but we said, wait till the attorney to look over, uh, cause it'll be ordinance change. Now, with, now only that, but a couple of policies, I was waiting till we had an official attorney. And then I'll send over to the attorney and then from there, put it on there for everybody, you know, to see officially.
Sounds good. So we can, we can move and you'll follow up with that and then give feedback from the attorney and we'll go from there. Okay, good stuff.
Yeah, one, one more recommendation. I think, uh, another thing that we spend a lot of time on is reports. I think if, if you provide a written report, we should have to read the report. So, like, like the chief does, he gives us a report, he says, if you have any questions, you know. But I think that's something that we could, we could move a little bit faster, you know, even like with, you're like, so we, that's his council. Right. You know, and so it's just like, hey, here's my report, it's gonna be posted and then we keep it moving. You know what I'm saying? So, you know, those, those are just recommendations.
I agree.
Okay, so you take that into consideration. Okay. Item eleven, discuss and take action to rat, ratify Mayor Allen's appointment of P V P D Reserve Officers Gerald Egerton, Officer Terrence Watson, and Officer Tony Ingram from part-time to filling vacant full-time positions. Uh, Chief Solomon, I'll let you speak to, who will?
Yeah.
Yeah, so did we not take any action in the meantime?
Yeah, Councilman Wallace is moving with the information, getting with the attorney.
What he's talking about is different than what, than, than everything that we talked about. That's just, what he's talking about is just one piece of.
Yeah, I was talking about my part to.
Yeah, he's talking about getting information in to the city's schedule, so.
Okay. The recommendation I would be taking is when you guys write the policy or whatever reform for us to vote up and vote down.
Okay.
Okay, item eleven, chief, share the information on the officers.
Please, the, uh, information, do you have any questions on it?
My, my, uh, my, uh, again, I just wanted to thank you, chief. We, he said it, but I, I wanna thank you, chief, for, um, sending the information. Um, I, I think last meeting, we had a conversation, um, around what we're gonna use. And we, we definitely wanna look at streamlining or figuring out what process. And Mr. Mayor, hopefully, we're using, uh, the employment regulations, Article nine point two zero. And so, you know, you, we've gone through these six steps, um, that, that are listed. And then we're just coming back for a step number six, which is for city council to wrap to, to make this election of, of what you presented to us. And so, um, I just wanna ask, have Mr. Mayor, um, did we follow all the steps for our, uh, city?
Uh, to my knowledge, we did. And I even confirmed with the personnel manual that the city's policy is to preferably fill vacant positions in-house first. And that's what we're doing.
So, the, so did we follow our, our ordinance? Do we, that, that's what I'm, I'm going by. And I just wanna make sure that we followed all six steps. Well, we're on step, we did step number one, we did step number six. And so, just making sure that we, our ordinance supersedes our personnel manual.
Was your personnel policy adopted by ordinance also, or was it, no, it wasn't? Okay.
I'm, I'm honestly not sure. Cause it was done about a year and a half ago or something.
Councilman Johnson?
So, chief, chief, um, do you guys have a, a M O U with the university? Because, I mean, the university has like twenty to twenty-five offices.
I've sent an M O U to the chief of the university. Uh, he's had it for about two and a half months. We talk about it every time we talk. He's not sent that M O U back. That M O U actually still limits because if it's not, if it's not own control, uh, or managed by the college, uh, or by the, or the A and M system, it's not within their jurisdiction. And that's what that M O U that I sent to him is talking about them assisting in areas where students live. So, yeah, we asked for an M O U, for sure.
So, I'll, I'll go back before I make the motion. Um, I, I wanna make sure that we're very clear that our personnel manual does not supersede our ordinance. And that we have followed all our, what is, what we have required, what we've said that was gonna be required for city employment. And if the mayor says that we followed all our, the, the process one through six, then I have a motion that's.
To my understanding, all of the processes we followed. That's my understanding. And which, which you with the chief.
If you have a specific thing you wanna ask, you should ask that.
Again, I, I don't have, my responsibility is to make sure we're following policy. Our policy is our ordinance, not a personnel manual. We, we opened the position up at the last, at the meet, last meeting. We're now filling the vacancy based on recommendation of the chief that then comes to the mayor. It's my responsibility to ask the mayor, did we follow our process? If he says yes, then I can make a motion. And so, okay.
Huh? Need to read the process?
Okay. Process says, uh, criteria required for city employment by the city. The city may employ no person in a skilled category unless the following are satisfied. A vacancy in the city table organizations have been declared by city council. We did that. A vacancy ad has been published, given, given the particulars. A formal application has been received and reviewed by city council. A reference check has been made on three or more likely to be accepted. And an interview of the prospect by committee of three who will report the findings to city council. Number six, city council ha- having made this election and the successful applicant notified. Part of this process also, because we're not hands-on, happens by the chief and the mayor. And so, I'm simply just asking to make sure that if anyone else asks us, that they follow this, our, this process. And so, you know, because they're, these three applicants also are not coming from the street. They currently are part-timers and we move into a full-time position.
So, I got a question. If they're moving from a full-time position, do they have to go through those same steps all over again?
Uh, it's not covered in the ordinance.
It's not covered, you know, ordinance doesn't cover that. So, if a person's come from part-time to full-time. What we're saying though, we had identified as a vacant position. Vacant position doesn't, we, we're just taking someone who's currently employed and moving them over, but it's still the vacant position that we have to declare open. So that's the only thing as far as number one is what we did. And so, we've gone through the process, the chief has done, made the recommendations. I'm, I'm assuming he had the committee of three and made the recommendations to the, to the mayor. And the mayor's saying, these are the, the people who he's recommending for us to make a motion. And if that's yes, then I can make a motion.
With, with this being somewhat of, of promotion, with utilizing existing personnel who've already been vetted and were on the job for X number of months or years, I don't see, because it's not specifically covered in the ordinance as you read it. This situation is not covered.
So, I mean, that's just like.
So, I'm comfortable with the chief's recommendation with us filling in-house based on history of the city, the personnel manual, and even what you read, that we're filling these positions with current people?
No problem. I, I, I was just simply saying, so if you're like, like any other job, a job at the university, they may have a person who they want to get the job, but they have to post the job saying that the job's available. And so, I'm just, my only question as far as for H R is to make sure we went through the process and you said yes. So I'm prepared to make a motion.
Councilman Rowan?
I move, I move. And hopefully, chief, we'll make sure that we use this, our process, or we work on changing the process. But we currently have a process that we wanna follow there.
And, and that's, and that's, and that's fine, but, uh, that is something that needs to be looked at. Because, uh, uh, there's a lot of things in there that I don't think has ever been followed. We tried to go as close to that as we could.
So, well, tell me what has been followed.
Well, I, I, in, in the past, I'm, I'm just looking at, I'm just looking at, I'm just looking at, now, I'm just looking at when I, when I start looking through files, and it, and this is, this is not, when I start looking at files, that process was not followed. When I start looking at files of people that were hired here. So, that's what I, that's what.
I don't know what year.
Because if you, if you asked us about the people we, we interviewed for jobs here, we can give you the notes on every one that sat in on that interview and what their notes were. And then we can take you through each step that they were taking through. I've not been able to find that at all. So, so, so I'm, I'm just, I'm just saying, that, that needs to be just kinda looked at and streamlined.
I'm, I'm, I'm gonna say this and then I'm gonna move on, but, uh, but I, every, I know every officer part to usually hire went through this process and they came here and they interviewed in front of us and all that. So, to say that it's never been followed, well, I can say for sure.
Well, I'm not, I'm not saying that part of the officer.
That, even, not even the officers, the.
Anybody.
Attorneys, uh, city secretary, they, they all went through this process. So I don't know about the notes part of it.
Well, when you say.
You don't give my notes.
Right. But when you say the process, and I'm not saying not coming before you guys, that may have always happened. I'm just saying.
I'm not saying the process doesn't need to be changed.
Well, that's what I'm saying. That's what I'm saying, it needs to just be, it needs to be.
Yeah, I'm just saying it's not.
I'll stop, I'll, I'll stop there.
Councilman Allen?
I believe that we approved to ratify Mayor Allen's appointment, uh, P V P D Reserve Officers, Officer Gerald, I don't wanna butcher his last name, Egerton. Officer Terrence Watson, Officer Tony Ingram from part-time to filling vacant positions.
Second?
It's been properly moved and seconded. The council ratified Mayor Allen's appointment of P V P D Reserve Officers, Officer Gerald Egerton, Officer Terrence Watson, and Officer Tony Ingram from part-time to filling vacant full-time positions. You've heard the motion, any questions?
Question?
All those in favor say aye. Allies have the same right. Ayes have it.
Thank you.
Just gonna make sure we follow our process.
Mr. Mayor? Hold on, uh, on, on this process, if we could just, I know we need to change it. And the, the chief has been saying we need to do some things, but we, we gotta make sure we're just following. That because residents are asking and we just wanna be able to say, if we, if I, we say we followed it, then I can just say we followed.
No problem. Uh, from an administrative standpoint, I think that, yeah, we got a, a couple of grants that, uh, we're rolling into state affairs, particularly from a, you know, FEMA Hurricane Harvey flooding, tax state flood situation. But, uh, and tomorrow's gonna be huge because we've got these people coming to, not just share information for those in the audience, but for the ones, uh, who weren't able to make it. We'll have literature and contacts to be able to put them in touch with. So all of our folks, uh, approximately a year ago, who were hit by these disasters can, uh, can get, even, even now, some of the assistance that they need. Councilman Rambler?
Just a quick question as far as administration goes. Can you give us an update of where we are with the R I Ps as far as, uh, city secretary, city treasurer, and city engineer?
Uh, the top two have been posted with T M L, uh, city secretary and treasurer. And I think the, uh, the engineer, I know I've been working with Mr. Underwood under the emergency appointment. Did we find one, Ms. Johnson, for the city engineer on T M L?
I'm still looking.
Okay, so, uh, we're looking.
Find the R I P.
The, yeah, the, the engineer part.
So, um, do you know when, when, because it, what is it, like a fourteen day, where it has to be posted? You know, when, when those are posted to T M L?
I don't know the date. We've just been going on to T M L.
Secretary was posted last week.
Last week?
Yes, and actually, they're finding information for the city treasurer position for.
And, and we received one application, um, totally no, uh, well, we received one application.
For the city secretary?
Yeah, the city secretary.
Would it be possible for us to receive a copy of those in our piece? Yeah?
Uh, sure. We can get that to you. We can email the B C C and the council and accept.
Uh, if, 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 if someone, um.
Hi.
Sent their information over to me, I just forwarded it over to you.
Sure, sure, we'll put it in the, the council. No problem.
Councilman Johnson?
Uh, a while back, uh, we have wanted a letter to go over to Panther Hill, uh, asking, uh, that no, uh, certificates of occupancy would be given, um, until we seen documents. And to my understanding, that letter was written, uh, but we didn't get any feedback. And also, uh, students continue to move in when, I think, uh, we agreed as a council, as a city, that we wouldn't give out any more temporary C O's due to the simple fact that we didn't have a city in it.
I shared the letter that, uh, one of the Olson attorneys wrote. I shared that with council. And I also shared our discussion on working with, uh, Bureau Veritas, Ms. Rogers specifically. We were finally able to correlate our schedules to sit down. And it turned out that Panther Hill had turned over to the city a lot of the documents that, uh, I guess we assumed Ms. Rogers with Bureau Veritas had received also. And that wasn't the case in the meeting with, uh, Ms. Rogers. And all this was in an email that was sent to council. Uh, so what happened was, the attorney understood and decided not to write a letter because Bureau Veritas is our independent contractor and the city had the documents. And they just saw what Bureau Veritas was doing is a reconciliation of per building, what documents they have, what if any documents they need. So that, in other words, we didn't know where we were. Because the, the premise was, we thought that, uh, maybe some documents or work wasn't done. And it turns out that we really didn't know that. So, Ms. Rogers is reconciling so we know where we are. Because if Bureau Veritas has everything they need and based on their approvals of each building, then the buildings are fine based on what we control and it being a private development. Yes, sir?
Also, I remember you stating that, uh, at a couple of city council meetings ago, and we had let you know that we didn't get that message. And you said that that message would be sent out to us. Uh, so we still haven't, I know I haven't received that. Uh, any other council members have received any information upon that deal? No?
You're talking about in regards to?
That attorney's letter.
Attorney letter? Uh, so, uh, Attorney, it was Attorney Bound, right?
Yeah, I think so.
Um, Attorney Bound, uh, he sent me the draft of the letter that he, that he got. I didn't know that y'all didn't get it either, you guys not?
Oh.
Okay.
Okay. I thought he sent it to all, he just sent it to you.
So, I guess he sent it to me.
And did you get any other information to say why he didn't send it out?
Uh, the reason why, uh, so I talked to Attorney Bound, uh, he wrote the letter. Um, and I want to, let me see if I can find the exact, uh, I wanna paraphrase what he said. Um, but, uh, from my understanding, um, what Mayor, uh, let's see. What, what Mayor Allen stated in terms of, uh, Ms. Donnell Rogers receiving information was a reason why he, uh, he advised Scott Boundz not to send the letter to, um, not send the letter to Panther Hills.
So, who, who advised Attorney Boundz not to send the, our, us ourselves?
I did. Based on information we didn't have at that time, and Attorney Boundz agreed with me that if the private developer had done nothing wrong, and there was a technical glitch with the paperwork between the city and its independent contractor, that was on our end, not on Panther Hills. So, so that's why the letter wasn't sent.
We also had given them a time period in which for us to receive the documents. So I'm not understanding, and I don't see how the miscommunication had all been dropped. Because, I mean, we, we've all asked for something. So I think we all should, as a city, receive it in return rather than one of us say that, oh, it's okay. Or because we, we gave them temporary C O, uh, with, I think, two times of fourteen days of us to receive, um, any information on any documents. And if we didn't receive it in that time period, that all construction had ceased.
And we have no way of knowing until we give Ms. Rogers with Bureau Veritas an opportunity to go through in addition to everything else she's doing, all of those nineteen, twenty or so buildings, until she gets back with us on what, if anything, is missing. We don't know that anything's missing, that's the point. See, Panther Hill turned over the documents. What you're saying is they had time to get them. They did give them us. They then subsequently got to our independent contractor, Bureau Veritas, our inspectors. They're going through the process to see what, if anything, they need for finals on each of the buildings. And they're not in purview that often, but that's where it is. It's with Bureau Veritas who we hire.
So that means no one should be moving in until we receive?
No, that's not what that means. That means, well, but, but what you asked was based on misinformation.
No, what we asked was based off the information in which we don't have, which we still do not have that information.
Bureau Veritas now has it. And we didn't know that at the time of our discussion. Uh, counselor, is there not some responsibility on the city's part with independent contractors that we hire? That if our independent contractors don't have the information, but we have it, we can't hold a private development liable for something that we received, but on our side, it hadn't been shared? I'll just put it that way.
Um, well, I would, I would stick to this, that we should always ensure that if we're gonna send a legal, a letter that has legal implications to a third party, that it's being sent with, um, knowledge of all the information. And if we don't have knowledge of all that information, you should hold off on sending the letter until it's received. That's a statement just based on the bare minimum of what I understand what's going on right here.
And that's where we wound up with Attorney Boundz. He understood and agreed with that based on what we found out after me and Ms. Rogers had an opportunity to meet after, I don't know, it might've been a week and a half.
I don't wanna get too deep into it, cause it's not, it's, 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 it's listed pretty generally on the agenda. And I don't wanna get.
No, it's not listed at all on the agenda.
Well, I was, I was under the assumption it was an administrative question, which was, would be appropriate. So I don't wanna get into much of a detail of this discussion because it's really not enough notice to let those folks know that this discussion was going to occur. Um, but it's something we can certainly take a, take a look at.
Oh, definitely.
Verify that, you know, we're moving in the right direction, we can bring that information back to you.
Yes, sir.
Okay, then, Councilman Rambler?
The new business, you need to ask for another date for it.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Councilman Rowan?
Um, not to talk on that issue. I have three questions. One, um, have you received any information from, um, or, or, uh, from what we received in our packets in reference to litigation? That's the first question under Mr. Redd report. Second, um, U S W gave us that operation report last month and we found out that we had those outstanding alleged violations. Where are we at with those, uh, artists number two and three? Have they been taken care of?
Yes, I think the last thing that we're getting is a map that we were, uh, awaiting from Mr. Linecker, former city engineer.
It said, could we have, it says our deadline is November, well, yeah, completion compliance due date is November twenty-sixth. And I want, I just was asking because.
Yeah. So, we're, we're aware of it and, uh, we've gotten everything except the, uh, the map, which we're trying to get electronically because of Lineckers having been involved with that. But we might, now we might even be able to get it from, uh, project management as well.
The C S I certificates, did we find those? Where, where was those now?
Uh, I'm not sure. Uh, U S W was in touch with them on our behalf, taking care of those things.
And then the second thing was, um, we talked about, uh, I don't know, uh, did we move forward or say we're gonna get some information about the line relocation? Where are we at with?
No, that was, uh, me just bringing to council's attention the problem we were having with that. And, you know, down the road to see what we might possibly be able to do. But, yeah, that was just such an ongoing, expensive problem. Uh, Mr. Johnson? Anything with, uh, okay, finance?
Okay, getting to the mayor, city council members, department heads, new city attorneys, residents of the city. Uh, you have two reports there, one for the city and one for economic development, B. Uh, this report, let's just look at the one for the city. Page one, uh, this is for the, uh, complete twelve months of the fiscal period seventeen, eighteen. Uh, you'll see that if you look at page one, we have revenue, actual revenue, three million and six versus budget of three million and three. So that's a favorable position. Then your expenditures are three million and five versus expenditures are three million and two. Uh, that's an unfavorable position. They almost offset each other. You look at the very bottom there of the page as far as the actual revenue versus expenditures, you see seventy-four thousand dollars net fund increase. Uh, that as of now. I do have to make some, uh, year-end accruals, which is expenditures come in after the close of, uh, the month of September, that really affect this particular accounting period. And so, I'll be making those accruals and giving you. And so I'll be making those accruals and give you an, uh, final year-end report, uh, at the next council meeting. Uh, the expenditures will change, because oftentimes we do have some expenditures that, that will come in after the close of the month that should be reported in this particular accounting period. Uh, there is some small revenue. The revenue is only the, uh, third quarter franchise taxes that comes in after the close of this accounting period. So I will include tha- that revenue on this particular accounting period report. Uh, that report will be given along with your October report at the next council meeting. Uh, just for a point of reference, if you look at page two, uh, let's look at our revenue. At the beginning of the year, we started with revenue of a million eight. We're ending up with revenue of two million two. So that's an increase of four hundred, roughly four hundred and twelve thousand dollars from a revenue standpoint for all your, uh, uh, revenue depositories.
Right, see, where, where are those two numbers at?
On page two.
Bottom right.
Look at the, the, the last column under September, you'll see four hundred and twelve thousand dollars.
Yeah.
That's the increase in your, in your revenue for this particular accounting period.
And that's just for the month?
No, that's for the year. That four hundred and twelve is for the whole year. We started with, with a million eight. We're ending up with two million two. And, uh, if you look at the individual depositories, the major increase is in public works. And the reason why public works is increased, it will decrease, because we do owe some outstanding bills in public works that will be paid. Uh, with that, that, that's the gist of my report. Have y'all got any questions on it?
I'm hoping any questions.
I have one question, uh, for the economic development financial statement.
Okay.
I know, uh, there's, uh, under, on page three, under op- operating expenses. Uh, it says the payroll, uh, dash director. Uh, I know, uh, it, it said that zero dollars have been used in that line item for September. Has there been any talk of fulfilling that position?
Well, you have to talk with the lead person in economic development, talk to their president. Uh, but that position was not, that was, this was not filled in this particular financial period.
The economic director position?
Mm-hmm. As you see there, uh, dollars were spent under the contract clerical. Fifteen thousand was spent for the contract clerical.
Okay, I see.
Mm-hmm. Uh, just a point of reference there, for the year of two thousand and eighteen, economic development, they added to their reserve another hundred and forty-seven thousand dollars. So if you go back to page one, you'll see that their cash position is seven hundred and seventy-eight thousand plus the account receivable, a hundred and seventy-one thousand is owed to them. And that money is being, gonna be paid to them this particular, this next month from the city.